Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, March 23 at 7:00 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you like to call the rolls?
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos, Counselor Driggs, and Counselor Clark.
Are all present and on the conference call, as well as Solicitor Marcello.
And Steve DeCosta. Is Steve DeCosta on too?
No, Justice Solicitor. Okay. Good evening, everyone, especially those who are watching at home. Welcome to the new normal. Just a little bit of an update. Under the current circumstances, it's very difficult to have a meeting, but we are working on acquiring some technology that will allow us to do more sophisticated video conferencing and will also allow the public the ability to participate so we can go back to having public hearings and public participation. It's a little bit difficult to do when you're limited to 10 people in a room, so I hope by our next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll be able to do that. Onto our agenda. We have a consent agenda. Item A, approval of town council minutes, February 24, regular meeting. February 24, executive session. March 9, regular meeting. March 9, executive session. March 17, a special meeting. Counselor DiMederos abstains, absent. February 29, special meeting. Counselor Edwards abstains, absent. February 25, special meeting. Counselors Cook and Driggs abstain, absent. Item B, acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards and commissions. There are three sets from the Tiverton Recreation and Beach Commission and one set from the Board of Canvassers. Item C, acknowledged receipt of reports. The Police and Fire Department overtime reports for February, the Department Monthly Reports for February, the Picassett Hills Cemetery Annual Report for 2019, and Treasurer Denise Sarette, February Budget and Revenue Reports. And finally, item D, acknowledged receipt of correspondence. One, Renee Jones, Wingover Farm. Two, Rhode Island Complete Count Resolution. Number three, the Towns of Charleston, Warren, and South Kingston Resolution in Support of Acts Relating to Elections, Primary Election Dates. And finally, Town of Charlestown Resolution in Support of Legislation to Establish an Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resilience Fund. Would any counselor like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Madam Clerk.
I'd like to have a counselor remove March 17 special meeting minutes. I do not get to continue them through the non在我的]
Okay. So.
Second. I don't know if we need to motion second.
Okay. So we're removing the March 17. Would any other counselor like to remove something?
Madam President, who removed the March 17 one?
At the request of the town clerk.
I've made the motion.
Joe Perry did.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
Motion, approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
There's a motion to approve the remaining agenda.
Second.
Is there a second? Joe Perry, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor DiMederos, Counselor Clark, Counselor.
Aye.
Driggs? Are those three?
I said aye. I said yes, yes.
Are those three ayes there?
Yep.
Yep. Three ayes.
Three ayes. Excellent. Okay. Madam Clerk would like the March 17 minutes removed because they didn't actually get into the packet, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'll make a motion to continue item 4A5 to the next meeting.
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Driggs?
Aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor DiMederos, aye. Okay. There's three more ayes. Public hearings. Originally, we had a number of public hearings that were scheduled for this meeting. Obviously, since we're limited to 10 people in the room, that's rather difficult. So there's a suggestion, and I'm going to ask the Solicitor, that they are on the agenda, but we will continue them till the April 13, 2020, meeting, when ideally, we will have the technology in place to be able to do this. So I have a question for the Solicitor. Do we need to make individual motions to continue each of these, or can we do them all as one?
Because they're all being continued to the same date. You can just make a motion that items 5A, B, and C be continued for April 13, 2020.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
Make a motion to continue items 5A, B, and C to April 13, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Clark?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Three more ayes. Moving on.
Did you get my aye? You got my aye, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Under General Business, Counselor Hilton, update discussion and possible approval of the recycling center plan, and two, a possible vote to send the recycling center site plan to DEM for approval. I'm going to suggest that we continue this. Those of you who are not here would realize that we got, apparently today, a memo from PAR with the details of this site plan, but it only came in today. So it wasn't in anybody's backup. Nobody's had a chance to really read through it yet, and I think that there are probably some questions about this, because while there are some changes, there is no updated cost structure with it. So I'm not sure where we want to go with this, other than I think that we should continue this to another meeting and, in the interim, ask PAR to prepare a cost estimate on the updated plan.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to continue items 6A, 1, and 2 to the April 13, 2020 meeting, including in that to ask PAR to update the cost estimates and prepare those for the council for that meeting.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it if I can say something.
Sure.
Okay. I'd just like, with all the controversy with this, I'd like to lay to rest some of the points that have been brought up regarding the recycle center as to where it can be. I'd really like to know who's, when it started, who said you couldn't use the DPW area, why does it have a water problem? Could we just go over that again? Because there seems to be quite a few people in town that think that would be a better spot. I don't have any answers for them, and I can't. It kind of goes back a while. So is there any way to have pair explain?
I don't even think, I'm not sure that it's even necessary from pair, although or PAR, I think we could get them. I do think that the DPW Director himself, who was part of those discussions, can explain why that's not an ideal.
Yeah, because they say there's all kinds of trucks and stuff back there and old trucks, and I'm even wondering why they're still there. Can't they, like, go for metal recycling or something? Or surplus.
Well, they surplus them. They basically salvage them for parts for other vehicles that, you know, so they take parts off of those old trucks. I do know that at a certain point, they get rid of them when there's no more salvageable parts, but they do, they do strip parts off of them to use on other vehicles on a pretty regular basis.
Right.
But we can certainly, we can certainly have that happen again. I do know that the Recycling Committee spent a lot of time on it. I know that PAR looked at it. I know that the DPW Directors looked at it. But just for the benefit of the public, who seems to be a little confused on this.
Yeah, I want the i's dotted and the t's crossed going, well, you didn't give us an answer. I just, before we go to the expense, just answer these questions and put people at ease.
I think that that's fine. I also think there are records of these discussions in prior council meetings, too, where this came up. So.
Madam President.
But we can ask for that. John, yes.
Can we ask, pending, pending the, you know, state of emergency being over, but for the April 13 meeting, when this is rescheduled to, ask the DPW Director to be present to address those questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So he can be there. Now, are there any comments from Counselor Driggs or Counselor DiMederos?
Yes, Madam President, I have, I have one. I remember, first of all, I agree with Counselor Cook. I think there, I'm also hearing a lot of people saying, I don't understand why the DPW, the site isn't good, so I think it would be good to have it explained again, if that's true. Secondly, I remember Counselor Clark asking at the last meeting that one of the things he wanted from PAR was sort of also, and maybe this was already just said, I don't, I couldn't quite catch what, I think it was Edwards was saying, but.
Counselor Edwards?
Counselor Edwards, sorry. I think he was trying to put together, he wanted a timeline to see whether we were on schedule for timeline, and I don't know if they've done that.
Actually, in this document that we, in this document that we just received tonight, there is a graph and a timeline chart.
Okay.
So that's.
I remember Clark asked, Counselor Clark asking for that.
Yeah.
And I don't see what they gave, so.
No.
Okay, good.
That is here, and I'm sure Nancy will put this in everybody's, well, you can probably scan it and send it out to everybody, but from the looks of it, it just literally arrived this afternoon.
Okay.
So everyone will have that.
So you're saying 4/18, we're going to discuss it. When's the next?
4/13.
April 13.
13.
Okay. So anybody else with a comment on this? All right. In that case, there's a motion and a second to continue this to April 13 with PAR and the DPW Director being here, as well as.
Just the DPW Director. We don't need PAR. Yeah.
Whichever answers the questions.
Yeah.
And an updated cost estimate. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Denise? Steven? Do I have ayes from the other two? Are you guys both still there?
I am. Did you hear my aye? I said aye.
I did, but I'm not hearing anybody else.
I heard Steven.
I'm not hearing Denise.
Mike, are you there? Mike?
I am. I'm here.
Okay.
I'm on mute, but I'm here, yep.
Denise?
So, Council President, this is how I would suggest that you do it. I would just take a, take a roll call of the people on the phone first, and then do the people on the phone first, and then people who are actually at the meeting second. So the ACLU and the Common Cause suggested that when we, when we go by phone, that you actually poll the people on the phone first, and then we do the people that are actually in the meeting, and you might have to repeat their names, so people later can figure out what they're, what's going on.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Clark, are you there?
Yes, and I am in favor.
Okay. Counselor DiMederos?
I'm here, yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. In that case, it passes unanimously.
Budget transfer time.
Budget transfer. DPW Director Rogers is requesting approval of budget transfer from 5540, 5104, Public Works Overtime, to 5130, 5108, Maintenance Longevity, for $2,860. And.
Madam President.
And, hang on, I was going to ask Mike. Mike, can we, can we do these as a block, or do we need to do them individually?
I prefer you do them individually.
Okay. In that.
Well, you could do, you could do, I mean, unless, unless there's objections to one or, I mean, you could do them as a block within each department.
In each department.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, secondly, DPW Director Rogers is requesting approval of budget transfer from Fund 255, the Restricted Recycling Account, to 5530, 7198, the Recycle Center Site Plan for $15,000. We might actually need to talk about that one.
Yeah.
So, maybe we should take these separately.
So, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget transfer from 5540, 5104, Public Works Overtime, to 5130, 5108, Maintenance Longevity, and the amount of $2,860.
Second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Any Counselor Clark comment?
No, it's just that, John, you're very hard to hear on.
I agree. I agree.
If you could just speak up a little bit, I would appreciate it.
Okay. John made a motion to approve the transfer for $2,860 from Public Works Overtime to Maintenance Longevity. Counselor Clark?
No objection. No objection.
Counselor DiMederos?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I, I approve.
Okay. All in favor here? So unanimous. Okay. Number two is a little more interesting. This is a request approval of budget transfer from Fund 255, the Restricted Recycling Account, to 5530, 7198, which is the Recycle Center Plan for $15,000. I'm actually not sure we can do this.
Nope. I'm sorry. I was actually going to make a motion to deny it, but.
Judge, I don't think we can.
I don't think we can either, Denise.
So, Madam President?
That's set aside for recycling, for landfill. Yeah. It sounds like one's going from landfill into capital. I don't think you can do.
So we'll make a motion to deny it.
Second.
To deny the transfer.
Why don't we just continue that for the next meeting, and we'll find a different source?
For an explanation.
I think that that's a better, I think that that's a better option. Did you hear that? Madam Clerk suggested that this item be continued to the next item and let the Director know that we are going to need to find another source for that.
To the next meeting.
Continue to the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Continue to the next meeting.
You said continue to the next item.
Yes, she meant meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant the, continue to the next meeting.
So, Madam President.
That's 4/13? Okay.
Yes.
Can we?
I'm fine with that. Okay.
Can we include in that to, well, do you want to form a motion on this?
Yes, please.
All right. So can I make a motion to continue item 6B2 to the April 13 meeting? And in that motion, I'd like to direct the DPW to find an alternate source of funds within the budget for that $15,000 amount that he's looking for.
Okay. Just.
But we could approve the first part, right?
We did approve the first one.
We already did.
Okay. Just so you know, John made a motion.
I heard, yeah.
To, did everybody hear that? Was that?
I did.
I could not, so please repeat it.
Okay. John made a motion to continue item B2, which is that requested budget transfer, to the April 13 meeting, and direct, at the same time, direct the DPW Director to out, find another source to allocate, from within the budget, to allocate these funds from.
Okay. What's the reason that this cannot be done the way he's proposed it?
Because the recycling, the landfill account is a restricted account, and the money in that account can only be used for the actual closure of the landfill, and there's not a provision in there for taking funds out for anything, including the development of the recycling center. Those funds have to be used for the landfill closure.
We've tried to use them for everything under the sun over the years and been denied.
Yeah.
Same thing with the trash bags, right?
Yep.
So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Joe Perry, seconded. Counselor Clark?
Yes, I'm in favor of postponing this or tabling it or whatever.
Okay. Counselor Driggs?
Yes, continue it to the 13th, April 13.
Counselor DiMederos?
Yes.
Okay. Here? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous. Acting Administrator Mello, approval of budget transfer from 2190, 5268, Health Active, to 2300, 5295, unfunded liability for $50,000. Nancy, do you want to explain this?
We're trying to, the Treasurer and I have been reviewing accounts. We're trying to clean up some of the accounts that are in the red before we get too far, too close to the end of the year. This is the insurance account. We've looked it through. There's only three more payments, so we should be able to make this unfunded, to cover the unfunded. This is from retirements.
Madam President?
Yep.
I don't understand. Can, can somebody explain it to me a little better?
So.
I can't even hear Nancy.
Okay. So Nancy's not near a microphone, but essentially Nancy and the Treasurer have begun looking at accounts that are in the red.
Yeah.
Beginning to do transfers now, rather than waiting till the 11th hour, and that's why you're seeing some of these, because Nancy would like, and the Treasurer would like to get some of those accounts squared away. So the unfunded liability account, which Nancy, how far in the red is that? The unfunded liability account is in the red, $50,982, whereas the health account, the active health account, which you said, Nancy, has three more payments to it?
Right. It'll cover this, and there'll still be a balance, a smaller balance, but a balance.
Would cover this and still leave a small balance in that account? And the unfun, and the unfunded liability is the, is the retirees, right?
Right. It's what's due them when they retire.
Right.
I think we had three retirees.
Yes. That's the amount, that's the money that's due staff that are retiring, and we're, you know, we are, they're due money on their retirement, depending on, on what they, on what they have. So we've had three retirees, and, and that's where we are.
Okay. Is this an unusual, Madam President, I'm curious, is this an unusual problem, or is this because there are three retirees happening right now?
I think almost every year, we have a problem with the unfunded liability account, because we never can project exactly who's going to leave.
Right.
And with what that we have to pay out.
Right.
And what the payouts are.
Exactly. So I don't know if you heard that, but it's a little hard to project.
I did. Yeah, I did. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to transfer $50,982.76 from account 2190, 5268, Health Active, to account 2300, 5295, Unfunded Liability.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Driggs?
Aye.
Counselor DiMederos?
Yes.
Okay. Those in the room?
Aye, 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 aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. John, could you do me a favor, because, could you text Chief Jones and ask him if we can call him when we get to E, but we'll go through these other things? Police Chief Patrick Jones, and I'm going to read off a block of these at once. Approval of budget transfers from 3330, 6928, Education Seminars, to 3330, 6667, Operations for $25,000. Approval of budget transfer from 3330, 5102, AFSMI salaries, to 3330, 5120, Accreditation Stipend for $5,000. Approval of budget transfer from 3330, 5498, In-Service Training, to 3330, 6930, Radio Communications for $1,000. Transfer from 3330, 6928, Education Seminars, to 3330, 6648, Auto, Tires, Parts, and Maintenance for $5,000. Budget transfer from 3330, 5168, Clothing Allowance, to 3330, 6969, Medical Supplies for $2,500. And finally, approval of budget transfer, 3330, 6928, Education Seminars, to 3330, 7840, Station Maintenance for $3,000.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the items D1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 that you just read off for the Chief's requested budget transfers.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
I have a discussion, Madam President. I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, when we went through the budget process and trying to figure out how much to give to various line items and stuff, this whole total amount and comes to $41,500, that somehow was freed up from all these various accounts to go into another account. So I just, the first thing that occurs to me is, were they, were the other accounts, the accounts that are being transferred from over budgeted? And I don't know what to do with that question, but it's just.
Well, I can answer this a little bit. If you notice, a lot of this is coming out of education seminars.
Correct, yes.
Because by law, we have to set money aside every year to provide for advanced education for our police officers. So many of them are enrolled in, or have been in the past, enrolled in master's degrees programs to get their masters in criminal justice or a related field.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's a requirement of the state. According to Chief Jones, a little bit of what we see going on right now is that while we do have a lot of younger members of the force, many of them have been taking advantage of the opportunity to do work overtime details at the casino, which you can understand, young people with young families would want to do that.
Yeah.
So we haven't had this year, as in past years, that many people taking advantage of the education account. And now that we're in the second, you know, we're past the second semester of what would be college, so essentially, you know, nobody's doing that.
Correct. Okay.
Right, right now. Some of these items, for example, I also believe have everything to do with what's going on in terms of the, of the COVID-19 virus. So for example, putting money into medical supplies.
Yeah.
As well as, you know, some station maintenance things for added, kind of, for lack of better description, you know, biosecurity sorts of things that are going on. But it's very hard to know in any given year who might be enrolling in a, you know, in a master's program somewhere. We have to set that money aside, but I think that, you know, this year, it just, it just hasn't really been, been used that much.
Okay.
Bottom line, we're lucky.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. So it allows us to actually, you know, put it towards, put it sort of towards some of the other things, and, you know, you won't be surprised to know, and, and everybody's a little bit worried about kind of the stress and strain that what's going on right now in terms of the coronavirus is putting on our first responders.
Yeah.
Including the police. So, any other comments or questions? There's a motion and a second. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Counselor Driggs?
Aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor DiMederos?
Yes.
Okay.
In the room?
In the room? Yes, or yeses, so all in favor, yes. The next item, we're actually going to try and call Chief Jones on this one.
I put his cell phone number right in front of you.
Oh, I have it. I just wanted you to text him and let him know I was going to...
Well, I figured I'd write it down so you could dial it.
There we go.
If you don't need that, I'll take that paper back, but...
There you go. I'm going to put him on speak, I'm going to call him on my phone and put him on speaker just to ask what this is, because there's no price with it.
I'm sure glad you're in charge of this, because it wouldn't happen.
Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening. So we've got multiple cell phones conferencing going here. We just finished approving your budget transfers. However, could you tell us a little bit more about the request permission to purchase a telephone radio recording device off of the GSA price list?
So back in 2019, the radio recording device, and this is the device that records all the radio transmissions, also, and that goes for police and fire, and also all the telephone calls that come into the police department. So that purchase of that system was based on the current telephone system that we have in place, which was purchased probably about 15 years ago. It's an analog system. So I know when the town administrator, he worked with Cox recently, over the past six months, to get a deal so we could have all of our telephones replaced and get IP telephones for pretty much, you know, a very limited cost. As a matter of fact, to the police department, it was pretty much free because we broke even. So we began that process. Cox came in and they started to look at our system. And just before they realized that, well, you're not going to be able to record anymore. And we were like, well, we can't have that. We definitely need to record all of our telephone and radio transmissions. So they said, well, the system that you currently have is not compatible. So I reached out to the vendor who we purchased the system for last year. And he said, well, the vendor, our sales rep said, we can, we can definitely upgrade. It's going to be an upgrade, which is going to be more costs. So he was able to give us a credit on the system that we bought before for about $5,000. I was able to obtain a grant for just shy of $8,000. Leaving, the total cost of the system was just shy of $11,000 total. So it would be an $11,000 upcharge. That is with the credit. So what I'm asking tonight is that you allow me to purchase the system so we can install the Cox telephones. So, and then utilize this system that all the telephone and radio transmissions are recorded. And how the town or how I would pay for that is through an $8,000 grant, which would shave about, out of the $11,000 cost, would shave $8,000 off of it, leaving the remaining amount of money coming out of my telephone operating account.
Okay. So John Edwards, would you do the math for me really quickly here so we know what math we're approving? So if you take, if you take $10,904.52 and subtract $7,830?
Thirty, seventy-four, fifty-two.
Thirty, seventy-four, $3,074.52. So essentially, Chief, what, what you'd be requesting to take out of your budget, and you're saying you have this in your budget, is an additional $3,074.52.
I move that we allow Chief Jones to, give him permission to purchase this system for $3,474.52.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Counselor DiMederos?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Okay. And Counselor Driggs obviously made the motion, so the remaining room, all in favor? Okay. And everyone here voted yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Cook, discussion impossible vote to request State D E M and all other agencies involved in landfill closure to allow a one-year extension.
God. I thought that with everything that's going on, it wouldn't hurt to ask. So it's going to impact the budget. We don't know what's really going to happen with all this or when things are going to get going. So I was, I was, I also contacted the solicitor, Mike, on this and asked him. And he says, well, it doesn't hurt to ask. So I did, you know, put this before the town council to see if we could ask for one-year extension. I was, I don't know anything about landfills. I, I went over there with my leaves and all that. It looks like to me, at least to me, there's still a lot of land. But I just thought maybe we could ask for one-year extension and give us a reprieve on all this expense coming up. So we don't know what's going to happen. Even with the casino money, I, I don't know if we're going to get that. I don't know what the impact's going to be with some of the expenses going forward and at least give us some breathing room to figure out what to do for at least a year. I would, I would hope they could see that there might be a problem here and give us at least a year. I was wondering if I could ask the council to put forward, with Michael's help, put forward this request. I'm not sure where it goes. D E M, whatever agencies it's supposed to go to.
Is that a motion? Are you making a motion?
Yeah. I'm asking the council to...
I'll, I'll second the motion. There's no harm in asking.
Discussion?
There's a motion and a second discussion. So I'm going to start on the discussion on the phone. Counselor Driggs?
I guess I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know when the last, I have no knowledge of when the last, whatever permission or whatever edict we get came from whomever it comes from. But, and I, and I, I just, I don't know what, I, I don't have any expertise to judge whether we're really at the point where it has to close. They still would say it has to close by November. I know there's been a history of people coming out and saying, well, and it has been extended various times for whatever reason. And I really, I know I talked to somebody at one point at D E M and they were talking about our particular landfill sits on a lot of water, you know, swampy, I don't know if swampy's the right word, but there's a lot of water there. So we have a particular sort of underneath structure to our landfill. And I really am no expert, but I guess I don't see any problem, given that I gather Counselor Cook has looked for, has asked for another, just an indication of why another site, I mean, this is a lot of money we're about to spend. And whether, why the D W site wouldn't work. And we're asking Rogers to, you know, the Director Rogers to come in and talk about that. And I don't know. I, I don't see anything wrong in asking. We don't have to, we don't have to use the extension if they give it, but what's the harm in asking? That's where I'm...
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, my thoughts on this are, you know, it might be nice to have an extension, except that, you know, we've been told a number of times that our landfill is going to be filled by November, and Rick Rogers has said it could be sooner. So asking for an extension, we may be fooling ourselves into thinking that the landfill isn't going to fill up. Well, no, no, I guess, I guess asking for an extension will be also be asking for a variance or something, whatever it would be called, to allow us to fill that landfill higher than what the current, you know, requirements are. I also, it's a little concerning to me that the, you know, we have a plan in place. We have a timeline in place. Now, I know the COVID-19 thing is going to throw a monkey wrench into it, but it seems like we're trying to buy time to hash this thing over some more. And I thought the hashing was all done, but perhaps it's not. But those are my thoughts on that.
I, if I, if I could just answer to him.
Because of the level of complication here, I'm going to let everybody go once. Counselor DiMederos?
Um, I don't even know what to say. We've already have spoke to D E M several times in the last couple of years. We've got an extension. The landfill needs to close. Now, will they give us an extension? I have no idea. I doubt it at this point. But I don't want it to delay getting this done by November. Because if we close it, then we'll have no solution by November. So I don't want it to delay the process we already have done. I've been involved, I don't know, for years now. They've been very patient with us. They have given us delays. They have given us extensions, but I don't believe that we should at all let this stop us from going on with the plan that we already have.
I...
Counselor Edwards?
Thank you. I'm going to try and speak clearly so everyone at the phone can hear me. So I think this is a good idea, although one year, I don't think is enough. I think, why not ask for three? And the reason why is because, as Counselor Cook put it, we, we do have an issue. The state's got an issue. State's got a funding issue. You know, you saw the treasurer say the other day that the state's got weeks, not months, before they run out of cash. We could be in the exact same boat. And if the state's got weeks, not months, until they run out of cash, who knows what's going to happen with our casino payments, upon which we are relying heavily in order to construct this recycling center. Now, I want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that the recycling center and a landfill extension are mutually exclusive. I think that we should pursue both. I think it's always good to have a backup plan, and the worst they can say is no. But we will never know the answer unless we ask. And yes, we have been back to that well. We've been back to that well a couple of times. We were able to get an extension on our lease. We were able to get, that happened a couple of years ago. There was a big hullabaloo about our actual operating license. What I understand, and again, I could be incorrect. But when you go up to the landfill, you take that road up on the left-hand side, there's that platform where we're currently handling operations. That entire platform could go up. It would still not exceed the median height above sea level. And I think it's worthwhile asking the question. Again, the worst the D E M can say is no. But I think the best way for us to proceed forward with this is rather than have a vote and just transmit the results of the vote to the state, I think that we should put together a formal resolution, vote on said resolution, and copy in our state delegation so that they can get to work up at the state level with, on our behalf, and actually enhance the ability for us to move this forward. So, you know, I'm all for it. I think instead of one year, we should ask for three. And I think we should do so in a formal resolution. And I'd be happy to work on putting that together so we can get it on the, on the next council agenda, vote, and then at least throw it out there. Worst they can say is no.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good idea to at least ask. The question I have with all of this virus that's going on now is, do landfill being used daily like it has been in the past, or are they restricting people from going in there? Because if they are restricting people from going in there, then that means it's not going to fill up as quickly as we thought.
I can, I can, I can give an anecdotal answer to that.
Hang on a second.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Hang on. I'm, I'm trying, since this is something everybody wants to have an opinion on to go around the table.
But I think it's a good idea to at least ask for it. We might not get it, but what's the harm in asking? And continue with, like John said, our plan with the recycling center. Continue with that, because this may prolong us from pursuing that recycling center right now with this virus that's going on. It may prolong the work that PA is going to do because they can't work. So we should pursue that, continue pursuing that, plus put in for the extension for the landfill.
May I, may I say something?
Actually, may I?
Yeah. I just...
I'm going to go.
Oh, okay. All right.
So I don't, I, I agree with Counselor DiMederos in that, you know, this has been going on for a long time. We were originally notified that we needed to close the landfill in 2005. That's 15 years ago. The original closure date was 2009. We've managed to get, you know, an additional 11 years out of it. And I don't disagree that it is possible that depending on what happens with this coronavirus, at some point, the D E, we may be able to go to the D E M and say, we need an extension. But keep this in mind, the money to close the landfill is not related to, to our existing revenues and whatever happens with the coronavirus. The money to close the landfill is in a restricted landfill account. The D E M, we're not going to lose that money. We can't use it for anything else. And they may say, you know, why are you asking an extension for closing on this? Your recycling center isn't my problem, isn't our problem. You can go to, you can go to trash pickup, you know, curb-to-curb service. So I tend to think right now, based on everything that I have experienced over the last week and all the conference calls that I have been on, that if we're going to go to the D E M and ask for an extension, then we need to have enough information, financial information, to make the case that we're asking for an extension only to allow us to complete the recycling center. Because we have the money for the landfill. And I don't think that they're going to continue to give us extensions on this. You know, we've been lucky in that that landfill is very old. It's completely unlined. There are things that have been dumped in there over the years that have never should have gone into a landfill, but that's where they are. And you're, you've got a landfill that's in the middle of a watershed, and you, everybody in that area is drinking well water. So, you know, at some point, you also have to recognize the potential risk to the groundwater supply down there and what would happen to the residents who live down there if, in fact, that landfill starts to leach into the groundwater and into the bedrock fractures. I think that if, if, if people want to or think about an extension, we would need to be far enough into this whole revenue picture with the coronavirus that we could make that case. We're only, you know, a week and a half into this. I have a feeling that if we tried now, the D E M would probably be not very receptive. I think we need to continue forward with the recycling center plan. And if we get to the point in terms of the revenue, and the state is looking at all of this. I mean, there, there's a lot going on in the governor's office in terms of looking at municipal budgets and municipal revenue as well as state revenue, because, you know, the headwinds are really starting to build. So I couldn't support doing this now. I could only support doing this if we could make the case. If it turns out that our revenue projections for next year are such that this would be an enormous hardship to do, that's the only time I could see trying to make this case to D E M. Because otherwise, they're going to say to us, look, you know, we've given you a lot of time. You haven't really, you've gotten a little bit on your plan, but you haven't really done very much. And frankly, you've got the money in the bank to close that landfill, so close the landfill. So I couldn't support it at, at this point.
Okay. So where are we now? We've all had one go win.
Everybody, everybody has had, we're, everybody has had one opportunity to speak on this.
That's what I'm saying. So do we go to a vote now?
So we have a, there, there's a motion and a second on the floor?
Yeah.
Just one thing.
Okay. Wait, hang on a second, because...
I wasn't insinuating using the money that was in the trash.
Oh, I know.
I was saying that if, if with this virus, they shut down people going to the dump, that'd give us a couple of more months to fill the dump. If they shut down the dump for five months, then we should be extended five more months instead of November. That's what I was insinuating.
Right. Although, keep in mind that, that I don't, there is no plan for, there is no plan for our trash, our weekly trash pickup right now to go anywhere other than to the landfill.
Right. But I'm talking about the people that go in there on Saturdays. There's a lot of people that go in there on a Saturday, bringing trash in. If they weren't allowed to go in there because of this virus, that would probably extend the life of the landfill a little longer.
I don't know. It's still open on Tuesday, Thursday.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If they do, they have it. Yeah. But I'm just saying if they did.
Wait. I just, I just wanted to say, Tricia, that this has nothing to do with that I didn't know that we don't have the money for the landfill. My concern is that the $500,000 or $600,000 that we want to use for recycle right now, and also the, all that extra money for trash, for the tipping fees and everything, I don't know where we're going to get that if this, if this continues. So my thing was that during this unprecedented time of the pandemic, and emergency measures by the federal, state, and local governments where people are not able to work and businesses are ordered closed.
Okay. But, but Donna, Donna, hold on a second. I think that that is what you said the first time. I didn't misunderstand what you were saying. I don't think, I don't think anybody did. I just don't want to give it the...
But you kept saying we have, I already know we have the money for the landfill. There's these other expenses that are going to be impacting the budget right now. And there's going to be people out of work. That's the only reason I put this out.
That was, I, I think I acknowledged that when I said, when we get a little further down the road in this and we see what our revenue picture looks like. Anyway, we have a motion and a second?
Madam President?
Yes, John?
One more. And I'll make this very brief. I would just like to ask Counselor Cook to withdraw the motion so that I can reach across the aisle, Democrat, Republican. We can put together a resolution, come back in two weeks, put it on the agenda and go, and vote on something that if it passes, is going to carry much more weight than just strictly what we're talking about right now. And if you're open to, I'd be happy to work with you on that.
All right.
So be it.
Okay. So Counselor Cook is withdrawing her motion. I'm sorry.
I withdraw my motion to work with Counselor Edwards on putting a resolution together to bring to... to bring to, uh, whoever it might be that he wants to run it to.
Back, back to this council.
Okay.
We'll, we'll put together an actual resolution, back to the council. And then we'll, we'll have something that we can then send to our state delegation in order to put some weight behind it.
Thank you.
Madam President, can I just ask one question of Counselor Edwards?
By all means.
Because I just want to make sure what I'm understanding here. Um, so Counselor Cook's original motion was to go before whatever agencies have the authority to do this. And it sounds like it's now being diverted to, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, a resolution to go before the state representatives to then put whatever weight they have to do it, which is sort of a different approach. And I just want to make sure Counselor Cook, you understand that, Counselor Cook?
I'm actually suggesting both. So we would, if, assuming we put together a resolution, the resolution, assuming it would pass, that would then be forwarded on to Rhode Island D E M. And we would also include our state delegation so that, uh, they can go and lobby on our behalf as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so you guys can work on this and come back to the council, uh, on the 13th, correct?
Correct.
Counselor Driggs has to withdraw her second.
Yes. Counselor Driggs, are you willing to withdraw your second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, update on town response to COVID-19. You see that we have two additional supplemental declarations to our state of municipal, uh, emergency. Numbers four and number five, although.
They were emailed to us.
They, which they were emailed to everybody, I think?
Yes. They just, um.
So.
I don't think I got them. Oh, emailed.
They were, yeah, they were, they were emailed to everybody, every, every member of the council today.
I'm sorry. I don't think I looked at them. Sorry. Okay.
They mirror exactly what the state was doing.
Okay. So essentially, um, we need to go through a similar process to what we did the last time. So, uh, the first thing I'm going to ask for is that I will accept a motion to add the following items to the town council agenda, uh, which are ratification of emergency orders of the town council president 2020-04 and 05, issued previously by the town council president under the authority of the Home Rule Charter of the Town of Tiverton, Section 405. So.
So moved.
And a second. Counselor Cook? I mean, Counselor Driggs?
Aye.
Counselor DiMedeiris?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Okay.
In the room?
In the room? All in favor? Okay. Uh, so now these, this item is on the agenda, um, but I need a separate motion to vote on the added agenda items by finding that an unexpected occurrence exists that requires immediate attention. So the chair would entertain a motion that says pursuant to 42466B, the chair will accept a further motion to vote on the emergency orders numbers 2020-04 and 05 above referenced added agenda items because there exists an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate action to protect the public.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Is this the playground thing?
Uh, that's part of it, but let's, let's get the motions there, and then we can have a discussion if that's okay. So Counselor Driggs? I have a motion and a second. I, I'm looking for.
Yeah. Hi.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor DiMedeiris?
Yes.
Okay.
In the room?
In the room. Okay. So, um, now we can actually discuss and vote on, uh, the previously added Tiverton executive orders, 04 and 05. So let me just, uh, sort of tell you what they are. The first of which, and these mirror, um, what has come out from the governor in terms of, uh, executive orders related to the state of emergency. I'm looking for my. Cop. Can I see one of your copies, Nancy? Because I have two of the same thing here, unfortunately.
Just make sure they come back to this.
Okay. So, um, 04 has to do with the sale of beer and wine. Um, and essentially, it allows, um, it allows the holder of a Class B license in the Town of Tiverton to sell up to two bottles of wine and 144 ounces of beer in its original factory sealed containers with takeout food orders. And then it also limits the number of people in any gathering to 10 people or less. And essentially, uh, these are any community, civic, public leisure, faith-based events, sporting events, concerts, fundraisers, parades, fairs, festivals, et cetera, et cetera. And then the second executive order, which is 05, relates, uh, to, um, limitations and essentially restrictions on all public recreation and entertainment establishments shall cease and perpson operations. Um, this includes theaters, cinemas, flea markets, sports events, bowling alleys, public playgrounds, concert venues, museums, zoos, et cetera. Um, it also requires that all close contact businesses, which include but not limited to, uh, gyms, fitness centers, exercise facilities, hair salons, barber shops, et cetera, et cetera, cease operations no later than 5:00 P. M. today. Uh, it also requires that all businesses that remain open follow CDC guidelines to ensure social distancing, including a minimum of six feet between persons, uh, appropriate hygiene, that sick employees stay home, that they regularly disinfect things, um, that public and private enterprises that remain open will post appropriate notice requiring compliance with the C D C recommendations. And again, it reiterates, um, any gatherings of 10 people or more in any public or private space are, uh, restricted. So those are the two executive orders.
Madam President?
Yes, John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, Executive Order 2020-04 and Executive Order 2020-05, under the condition that these will remain in full force effect through March 30th, 2020, um, and cannot continue unless, uh, authorized by the, continued, uh, cannot continue to be authorized unless done so by this body.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Can I add, in accordance with our, in, uh, done in accordance with our Home Rule Charter?
Yes, you may. I actually have on my.
Did I miss anything that Attorney Marcelo wants us to say?
I don't think so. Attorney Marcelo, did we get that all perfectly?
I think you got it perfectly. Thank you. I'm watching you as well, so.
I'm a quick study mic.
I, I will, I will say this to those who are watching at home. It's entirely odd to be having this meeting here that's taped, uh, without, um, without citizens here and participating. It's, it's a strange feeling. And, uh, I actually miss having, having people here. Soon, though. So there's a motion and a second. Is, are there, is there any other discussion or any other questions about this from anyone?
The, the only thing that I would add, Counsel President, is that, um, uh, I know that Councilman Edwards put it on March 30th. We may need to meet, uh, you know, before March 30th, um, to extend those because I don't think we have a meeting planned. So if you want to push it out to your next April meeting, that would might be a little bit more beneficial.
John, are you willing to amend your motion to, to the April 13th meeting?
So I have one question on that, um, for the solicitor. If I make the motion to amend the effective day, or I amend the motion to extend the effective date to the 13th, if the governor repeals one or both of these prior to that meeting, we would need to repeal them. So wouldn't my motion have to say that we're going to continue this until, or we're going to continue this, this executive order until April 13th? However, if the governor repeals these items in her, the companion pieces at the state emergency executive orders, that these two would also be repealed at that time? Can I do that?
Uh, you could do that if you wanted. That's a, that's a fail safe. Um, otherwise, you would have to meet to repeal them yourself. The only, the only caution I would give you is that, say, out of a, just, and I hope this doesn't happen, but we don't know, say that Tiverton somehow became a hotspot and the governor repealed her orders, but we're still under our own executive, you know, authority, uh, and municipal emergency, and suppose that Tiverton needed to continue it for whatever reason, um, so we would, you know, uh, you'd have to, we, we want to have those continued, um, at least for the, at least, at least for the 13th. But it, it really doesn't matter.
Well, I.
It's, it's up to you. But I, I would prefer to keep it to the 13th. If the governor repeals, then we can always have a phone, quick phone meeting and repealing them ourselves as, as well.
And keep.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. And, and keep in mind that, that should that happen, um, if, and if three counselors feel strongly about this, you can always call for a special meeting.
Yeah, but I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather keep it in and, and just, you know, we can deal with it at the time. And if she's repealed it, we don't have to call a special meeting. We could just deal with it. Tricia?
Yes, Denise.
I honestly don't think she's going to repeal it. I think it might even get stricter.
Yeah, I.
Uh, I mean, I might be in the forefront of it. Um, so I don't think, I think we're safe for April 13th. And if we need to change it, and, um, God hoping we will, but I don't, I think the chances that she's not going to repeal it by April 15th.
So.
Yeah. I'd keep it till the 13th.
All right. So I would like to amend, amend my motion, uh, to extend these both out to April 13th. Um, and caveat that 2020-05 would immediately become repealed if the governor were to repeal the exec, the companion executive order, uh, at the state level prior to the 13th. And I'm going to add one piece of reasoning for this because 2020-05 deals with the closure, a foreclosure of businesses, and 2020-04 is just liquor. So if businesses are able to reopen, I certainly don't want to stand in their way in Tiverton in allowing these people to get back to work if the, the CDC and our state agencies say it's time to go back to work.
I, I, I can see that, and I think that, that all of us would be thrilled if that could happen. So I don't have a problem with it. Um, I would like to say, though, uh, especially to the people who are watching and the people who might watch this later, um, all of these executive orders that are coming are coming for a reason. Um, the governor actually spoke with all of us over the weekend herself to say that, you know, there is a window here that we have in front of us to kind of tamp this thing down. We're not going to make it go away, but to, to tamp it down so that it stays manageable, so that our medical resources, our hospital systems do not become overwhelmed. And you can see right now that that, you know, is starting to happen in New York. Um, Governor Baker in Massachusetts issued stricter orders and more severe orders today because they are worried about that in Massachusetts. Nobody's kidding when they're really asking us to please, you know, minimize our contact with each other. Um, you know, do the things that you need to do. Buy food, go to the pharmacy, um, you know, you have doctor's appointments. If you're tired of cooking, you know, go out and get takeout food. There's plenty of restaurants that are open in Tiverton. But as far as, you know, seeing groups of kids on the playground or people, you know, socializing, everybody here is a parent or, you know, we know that it's hard to have, be locked up at home with your kids. They want to play with their friends. They want to go out onto the street and hang out.
My kid's awesome.
They, they, you know, it, it's a difficult time for everybody, but we've been asked repeatedly, um, to let you know that this is serious. Um, we have a short window here and that we all have to do our part. And even the council, you can see, we're all sitting six feet apart. Some of us, um, agreed to call in by phone so we wouldn't go over the limit. Um, Counselor DiMedeiris, as many of you know, is a nurse, um, and, you know, is working in a tough environment. And because of, you know, her potential exposure, exposure, she didn't want to be here tonight. Um, everybody's doing their part. We really need to ask the people of Tiverton to do their part, uh, in, in just staying home as much as you can and quiet as much as you can. Uh, the other thing that people need to, to understand is it's here. It's, it's in Tiverton. We have positive cases in Tiverton. I've also heard from people, and, and we've heard at the state level, that there's an assumption that, you know, the risk is really for older people, uh, that somehow children aren't getting this or younger people aren't getting this. It's just not true. The state now has a number of pediatric cases, including hospitalizations. The majority of the people who have this in New York City are under the age of 50. So it's a little bit different than what we heard coming out of China where this is really something that people who were older or had underlying health issues had to worry about. We all have to worry about. So we hope that we'll have a high level of cooperation from everybody in, in doing their part to, you know, hold the line on this. Thank you.
Can I just add a personal note? This is Counsel, Counselor Driggs. Um, my husband and I are really doing our part to remain, um, I, I'm one of these telephone-in counselor members right now. But it, it really is serious. And, you know, it, it sort of mollifies everything we're doing if people don't do it. So I, I applaud what, um, President Hilton's saying. And we need, we need to really take this seriously. That's all I want to say.
Trish?
Yes, Denise.
Um, as everyone knows, I'm, I'm working right now in the hospital. Um, yeah, that, we are asking people to please stay home because if this works, we will get sick. The healthcare professionals will get sick. And there's not going to be, um, a lot of help if that happens. People need to stay in their houses. Let us take care of who's sick right now and not spread this.
Yep. Thank you, Denise. I agree.
Move the question.
Did, Joe, did you have a question?
No, I said move the question.
Okay. There's a motion and there's a second. Joe did. So there's a motion and a second regarding, uh, supplemental orders 04 and 05. All in favor, Counselor?
Do the.
Is that with the amendment?
Yes.
On the February, okay.
With John's amendment.
To April 13th, but on 2020.
Counselor Driggs?
Aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor DiMedeiris?
Yes.
In the room? All in favor? All four.
Says we can't work together, huh? 7-0 in everybody.
There we go. Um.
Madam, Madam President, I would just, um, and I can speak to the Counselor Cook tomorrow, but while, while I'm on the line, um, she need, she will need to amend the official agenda to reflect that these items were added to it and then post an amended agenda.
Thank you, Mike. Yes. Okay.
Okay. Um, we're on to item H, under my name. Discussion and possible vote on search, selection, and appointment process of interim administrator. Uh, as you know, Nancy has been acting administrator, which. Per the charter, what?
I thought there was one more vote. You just voted to allow the vote, but did you actually do the vote?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, that was us.
That was the third motion you made?
Yep. That was the third one.
We had a bunch of so moves in there, so.
Yeah. Uh, as you know, Nancy's, Nancy's, uh, period is acting administrator per the charter is for 35 days. Um, and, uh, the, the administrator seat is vacant. And under the charter, the town council can appoint an interim town administrator. I tend to think that it's unlikely, given what's going on in the world, if we did go out to try and advertise for a, um, permanent administrator at this point, uh, I, I'm not sure, given what's going on, who would be applying for the job.
Or who could interview them.
Or, yeah, and, and who could interview them.
Right.
It, we're, the timing on this is, isn't great. It, we're, the timing on this is, isn't great, as they say. But that being said, there is a tremendous amount that is going on here right now. As you can imagine, there's a lot of stress on the staff with the way the town hall is operating, people's concerns. The staff's been great. They're coming into work, but, you know, it's definitely stressful. Both the chiefs have a lot on their plate right now, with first responders having to, you know, deal with all of this and be prepared, never mind the fact that, you know, everybody doesn't have quite enough protective equipment in the state. So the thought was- Who put us on hold? Mike?
It's not me. Could, could be the hospital.
Not me.
Oh, you know what? It could be Denise getting a call from the hospital.
Denise, take that call.
Hi. You know what?
Why don't we just pause?
Reconnected. Okay.
Good job. Good job. Okay.
All right. So anyways, the charter allows the, the town council to appoint an interim town administrator.
Yep.
And we discussed the idea of, a little bit of doing that last week. I'm also going to let Nancy speak for a little bit, if she wouldn't mind, about sort of the challenges that, that she's been facing in the office in doing this. Nancy?
Well, I have to say this COVID-19 puts a whole-
It's hard to hear Nancy, just so you know.
Get on the speaker. Go to the latter plane.
This COVID-19 puts a whole added layer onto this. It is quite stressful at the town hall, and I think at this time, it would be best for the council to appoint someone as interim other than myself.
Yep.
Because also, you all know, I am of the age, and I have some underlying conditions here, but from the clerk's end, I can do some of my work remote from home, and I'm set up to do that. But it's difficult on the day-to-day coronavirus issues that come up. I know Trish has been handling a lot of the conferences, but there's conferences beyond that that I have to listen to. And there's not a lot of activity going on with the administrative business right now, but I expect as soon as this gets moving, there's going to be a lot more. So quite frankly, I would find it helpful to have someone sit in as interim.
Yep. Okay.
I've done it several times, but I think this time, I'm going to have to pass on this.
Okay.
So I asked in the past how this has been done. The last time, you know, other than when Nancy takes it over as acting, which she's done a number of times, I don't know how many, over the years, probably about a dozen, while there was a search going on for a permanent under not circumstances like this, I think the last time that there was an interim was when the existing town administrator, I believe, had a significant surgery and was out. The town council did not necessarily go through the whole RFP process and all of that, because it just takes so long. So, you know, I talked to Solicitor Marcello a little bit about it. It, not for sure that we'll get an ideal candidate, but to my mind, you know, a strong candidate would be somebody who is, A, familiar with Tiverton, B, has a strong background in budgeting, and I will tell you why, and, you know, somebody who can sort of come in here and also be willing to handle all of this coronavirus stuff, because there's just, you know, there's a flood of stuff that's coming from the governor's office. There are two conference calls a day, sometimes three, and on the, on the budget side, you know, the, the state is definitely recognizing the headwinds, not just their headwinds, but our headwinds, and, you know, that they know that they're going to have to do things to help us, but we're going to have to be able to explain what we need in terms of help. So somebody who really understands the budget and, and the municipal budget would, would be good. So Mike actually threw out an idea of making this announcement publicly, letting people know that we're looking, and giving them, and for Nancy's benefit, you know, a relatively short timeframe to submit a letter of interest and a resume, with the idea that, you know, there may be somebody out here locally who could step into this until we're ready to start the search process.
This is, this is Counselor Driggs. I, I absolutely agree with, are you there, everybody?
Yep.
Okay. I agree with Mike, and I'm wondering if, does anybody have anybody in particular in mind right now that might be, I'm not saying to name the name, but is there anyone that anyone can think of that might be willing to do this?
I, I, I mean, I don't know. I think if you do know of somebody, the thing to do would be to reach out to them and ask them to submit a letter of interest and a resume.
Yep.
So that it's, you know, so that it's as fair and open a process as it can be, even though it's a short time period. I think that that's probably the, the best thing that we can do.
Uh-huh. Okay.
I do just want to make one more comment. I do have to say that I have appreciated the help of the treasurer, the assessor, the police chief, the fire chief, the building officials. Been wonderful checking in. It's not that we're not able to handle it. It's that it's becoming too much to put one person on the helm like that. I just wanted to make sure I, you realize that there is a lot, there are a lot of people that are joining in to help on this. And I'm thinking of someone, and I intend to contact them and ask them if they'll put in a resume. But what I'd like to know is, how are you going to go about appointing this? If we do get resumes by Friday, how would the council be appointing? Would we need a special meeting on Saturday to handle this?
Let's ask the solicitor that. Mike, Nancy just asked if we did this process, then we would, the question was, we would need a special meeting to make an appointment?
Correct. If, if, I mean, you, ideally, you probably want to have a meeting to review the resumes and then make, make an appointment. I don't know if you want to do it in one shot or whatever, but my suggestion would be that, you know, obviously, people who are elected or not elected have contacts within the community, you might have, or outside of the community, who might be interested in applying. Certainly now that you could reach out to them and say, hey, the process is open. If you want to, if you have a letter of interest and a resume, please send it in. Obviously, this is a public meeting. People are hearing this. You put it on our website, you know, put a short deadline, and then, you know, have a meeting to review who, who applies, and then nothing prevents you from, you know, based on the resumes alone, appointing someone from the resumes. But if you did want to have interviews, you could do that as well. But it's, it's the total process. But if you want to have a meeting on Saturday, then I would, you know, the deadline's going to be this Friday, then perhaps you might want to, you know, already post a meeting to review the resumes. You want to have, and we can, and again, we can do the, we can do the meeting by phone, for, at least to review them, if you want, or the interviews, whatever, you know, whatever you want to. But I know that there's, I just want to add, not that I want to, there, there have been, the COVID-19 virus has, has, has put a lot of strain on all municipal workers, elected officials across the state. There are numerous meetings. There are updates. Emails fly constantly. Even my, you know, even in my role as solicitor, there are tons of information that's coming out, affecting employment and, and FMLA and all these other issues that we're all trying to work through. So, you know, to have someone who could, you know, attend some of these meetings and, you know, be more of a clearinghouse for us would, I think, would be beneficial. That's just my opinion.
I would agree. So should we, should we put something on the, put something on the website, right?
Yep.
By consensus, I'm asking, yes. Put something on, on the website and a letter of interest and a resume by end of day on Friday?
That sounds okay.
Wait, by when? I'm sorry.
End of day on Friday?
Ooh, okay.
It's tight.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's tight, but I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, it-
Yeah, 3/20, 3/27? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I'm thinking if-
And I'd be here to offer all the assistance.
Yes, and, and-
It's not like ID.
And Nancy, Nancy's just saying, of course, she will be here to offer all of her assistance and, you know, unlimited experience, you know, to whoever was selected. So we know that that would be an enormous help. And Nancy, I think we-
It would be enormous help, but I just want to say, as one counselor person, I'm very aware of what Nancy does and what her particular reasons are for not wanting to continue to do it, and I think we should help her in any way we can.
I would agree, and, and I think we all owe Nancy a tremendous debt of gratitude for what she's been doing for us.
Yep.
Okay. So do we need a vote on this, Mr. Solicitor, or can we go by consensus that this is-
I think you should just vote that you're going to, you know, close, you know, anyways, interested to submit a, a letter, a resume and a letter of interest by 3/27, and then if you guys, if you do want to have a meeting on Saturday to review those resumes or whatever, we can maybe post that by Thursday.
Okay.
Up to you.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
So I'll make the motion to ask for people to submit a resume and a letter of intent to the town hall no later than 4:00 PM on Friday, the 27th, for consideration for appointment for an interim town administrator, which we can review on Saturday and choose to appoint or not. We'll ask the clerk to post that for us.
Trish?
Yes, Denise?
I think we should do it all in one meeting. I think we should look at the resumes and appoint all in one meeting. There's no need to have another one.
I'll second it.
I think we should, you know, that's a good point. I think we should post it that way, depending then if we decide, you know, okay, well, we want to talk to somebody or interview somebody. We also need to, you know, know what we would be offering for salary for this, too, by the way. I'm not expecting somebody to do this as a volunteer. So we would probably, and, and get some guidance on Mike on, you know, as an interim, are there any, I don't know, do you, do you offer any type of benefit to an interim or not? Or?
It's up to, it's up to the council, how they, how they deal with it. You could.
I, I, I mean, the only-
I mean, the reality, the reality is, because of this virus, we don't know how long to have a full, full search process for a permanent. You know, I don't know how long this person will, will be an interim, because right now, I would imagine that people are reluctant to change jobs, or if they, if they even have a job. So I don't, I don't ever know, you know, how that, how, it's not a very good climate to be looking for permanent town managers, in my opinion, right now.
Right. Right. Well, to Counselor Di Madiris's point, I think we should post it both ways. That way, we have the option.
Correct.
If there's an ideal candidate and we can come to agreement. If there, if there isn't, or there's more than one person we want to see, or we need to ask questions of, then we can, then we can do that. But I think, I think Denise's idea of posting it that way is a good one.
And of course, if you have got resumes that are not impressive at all, you can always extend the, the timeframe again.
Yep. Okay. Right. So, so there's a, there is a motion and a second? Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Driggs?
Aye.
Counselor Di Madiris?
Yes.
In the room? That's four yeses in here? Okay.
Where could this go? 7-0.
There we go. And finally, town solicitor, you have two items for us. Mike?
Very briefly, thank you, Madam President. The notice of claim from the law office of Jeanne M. Scott, I just forwarded to everyone for information purposes. I don't know where that's going to go. I haven't had a chance to speak to her. I know there are some issues there that we'll probably need to address, particularly with the acting town administrator. So that's just for information purposes only. And then I, and we just concluded Mr. Katz's response to the complaint that had been previously filed against the Board of Gamuses. So that number two is now in the hands of the Attorney General, and we're waiting for a decision.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yeah.
On 7A?
Yes.
Should that be on May 2nd, 2019, or is that correct, 2009?
7A. That threw me. I think she made a mistake.
Yeah, I do, too.
2019. As you read it, it really threw me. I'm like, 10 years-
Yeah, it's like 10 years later. So should that be 19?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, what's he saying? I missed it.
Counselor Perry is looking at, is looking at the, the notice from the law office of Jeanne Scott. There seems to be a date typo in it.
Remember Nancy, I told you that it just threw me, like, I'm going, why am I hearing this 10 years later?
Yeah, like 10 years later, you know, that file.
So that brings us to-
Now, wait a minute, though. The, the notice that is, that's in our, under that agenda is March 10, 2020.
The date it was received.
Yeah, it's, yeah, but I'm talking about the first line.
Who's talking about?
Says, did town council members on May 2nd, 2009. It should be 19.
There's a typo in the body of the letter.
Yes.
The date when she was hired.
I just want to make sure that's what it was.
Yep.
Oh, I see. I got you. Got you. Okay.
Although, to the solicitor's point, that's there for information, and he'll be handling that with the acting town administrator.
You're, you're saying it was on May 2nd, 2019?
Yes.
Okay. Got you. All right. Thank you. Okay.
So, so I think that that brings us to the end of our open session agenda. So I now would need a vote to go into executive session?
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Town Solicitor, 42465A2, litigation Faulkner v. Tiverton.
Second, yes?
Yes.
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 Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Di Madiris?
Yes.
And continuing in closed executive session, Town Solicitor, 42465A2, litigation State v. Monroe, case number 21, 2018-02381, and case number N2, 2020-0081A.
Second, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Di Madiris?
Yes.
And continuing in closed executive session, Council President Hilton, RIGL 42465A1, 42465A1, discussion of job performance, character, or physical or mental health of a person or persons, provided that such person or persons affected may require that the discussion be held in open session. Town administrator writes, notice given.
Second, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Counselor Clark? Counselor Driggs?
Yep.
Counselor Di Madiris? Okay, we're now in closed.